State Bank and Trust has been invested in Winfield and Marion County for more than a century. And today, we remain deeply committed to meeting the needs of local families and businesses with excellent financial products and friendly down home service.
But more than that, we're dedicated to supporting the growth, success, and well-being of our community as a whole. Because when it comes right down to it, there's nothing more important than a community.
And just like our outstanding city officials, police and fire departments, you can count on State Bank and Trust to help make Winfield and Marion County a great place to live for everyone who calls this area home.
Hello, everyone. This is Chuck from Span Hardware in Winfield, Alabama. Good to be with you today. And just want to let you know, we've got some new things this year for the spring season. As you can see, steel now houses a lawn mower. We're going to have a full line of the steel zero turn motors. We have a full line of the steel wheat trimmer and chainsaws. Just about anything you need to maintain your home this spring and summer, from lawn and garden equipment to paint to hardware, anything you need. Come see us, we'll help you if we can. Thank you.
This is Eric Simmons from Furniture Depot. We have a store in Guen and Fayette. We've been serving the people of Northwest Alabama for 23 some odd years. We'd like to be your furniture store if you'd let us. And we'd like to thank you for your business this past year and invite you to come and shop with us this coming year and for the years to come.
Hello, Lee Hines here, owner, operator of Alexander's Heating and Air Condition.
We've been family owned and operated since 1954, proudly serving Marion, Fayette, and Lamar County. We are carrier factory authorized dealers, but service all makes and models. We specialize in residential and like commercial HVAC systems.
So as we get ready to enter another hot Alabama summer, please remember Alexander's Heating and Air for all your HVAC needs.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of 12 miles and 22 consumers on the road from Guen to Sullivan. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at (205) 921-6712.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you. With five locations serving seven counties, you don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high demand career tech and health science offerings. Let us help you.
From home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality services and products with value to meet every family's need. You'll find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family and honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at 981 Alabama Highway 253, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tommy Bowen, Certified Funeral Service Practitioner, at (205) 487-4327.
Our dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this another day of life, and we thank you for all the blessings you've given us. We ask that you will be with us during this meeting and may that all the decisions we make be for the benefit of the citizens of Winfield and not for ourselves, for which in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
In light of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We should make no decisions. We should make no decisions. I don't make decisions. The city of Winfield will not make them.
Welcome everybody to January the 7th, 2025, Winfield City Council Meeting. First item on the agenda is approval of minutes from December 17th, 2024 Council Meeting. I need to ask for motion to approve those minutes. Nobody's got a problem with the way they're going to be reported. Gina made a motion, James Second, all in favor. All right, next item on the agenda I had put on here is parking off Midway Drive. A business owner that owns several businesses here in town, that owns the property there to the right when you go down Midway Drive at the third, what I call the third light down here to Wells Fargo Light or the Pizza Ball, and you turn left going toward Continental. That, when you go down the hill, you know, you turn to O'Sharry House. There's an alley that goes up to O'Sharry House from that alley to Frisco. That area right there is asking about bringing that drain up and raise that ditch up and put parking spaces in that ditch. It'd be banked up to his property. I'm not real 100% sure, which Todd may know more about it, about what our right of way is in there. But, you know, the same landowner owns the property just behind, across from the telephone office down here behind Span and R.W. Harris and all that, where that parking is. He would seek the city with assistance and create more parking space there. I told him I'd bring it before the council. Of course, I'm always open for parking, more parking.
What are you talking about?
Let's go down the hill here on Midway Drive and get down the hill where that alley runs from Main Street here through those buildings and it goes over to O'Sharry Building. If everything south of the O'Sharry Building to Frisco on the right side of Midway. Probably get 10 or 12 spaces in there.
Right actually where they want to put on the drain.
If you go through this alley right here between the old citizens' bank where the museum is and Gold Connection, go through that alley and you come over to Midway, you know, it goes straight across over to the O'Sharry House. Everything on that side from the O'Sharry House, in front of O'Sharry House down to Frisco Street on the right.
On the west side?
Yeah, it'll be on the west side of Midway.
And it would be parking in.
When you go down, you'd pull it in like this.
Parking would be actually down near the street in front of O'Sharry House?
Yeah, but it would be, O'Sharry House would be facing that parking.
Right.
Where that storm cellar is. Be in front of that storm cellar.
With the coating or something.
Just raise it. There's already a drain there, we just need to raise it. We'd have to raise the drain. And water's bad, I don't know if you know, water's already bad to stand there. We could raise it, when we raise that drain, we get the water probably to drain better there, but he's willing to, his part of the, I don't know what our right of way is, but his part of the property that it goes against, he's, you know, wants the city to help add those parking spaces in there. I recommend that we do it because we need more parking for everything, but what, I don't really want to, I don't, long story short, there's another business fixing to go in that little building he's got there. And the person that's putting that business in that little other small building that's there, you know, right across where I'm talking about?
In that gravel lot.
Yeah, they already have another business in Winfield, and they want to add another business there in that building.
Parking is better.
All right, y'all, I need to ask for motion to let me move forward, because it needs to be some field dirt brought in, but I've got a place where we can get some field dirt.
While they're up school.
Yeah, yeah, that, and wherever somebody loading it out and needs to move it, we may need to put a little asphalt on it if we can get it in there and get the drainage raised.
Scrappy.
Yeah. I got a motion to do it from Larry and Second by Tim, all in favor. Nothing else you need to do on that already, Todd. All right, next item on the agenda is the old business. If you don't mind, let me start on the old business. I've got Susan here with Mills program that we've got going on at the community center. Susan, if you will, go ahead and tell us where you're at. She had, you know, she had out for a position to be filled. She called me about something that's going on with that. Go ahead.
It's been about a year ago. We know it's been longer than that because we're in hard mode, so I forgot about her. It's a NACO program where the city pays $1,000. And I get an employee that is basically funding through NACO plus the $1,000 that the city has. We had had a lady in that, she passed away over the filter. That lady has, what was the day we went back last week, sent a text that she had come somebody else and quit. I've had somebody come in in the meantime at a five, but today I had somebody else apply. So I got ahold of NACO and I said, if the city will okay it, will y'all, can I have another one of those? She said, get the city to okay and I'll put on as many as you want. So what I'm asking is, would y'all be willing to fund the other $1,000 for me to get another employee to help between me and Gina?
NACO picks up the difference.
Yeah, NACO pays probably 98% of them. Programs. It just takes the $1,000 from the city. It's a part-time job, pays a minimum wage, I'm angry. One of the ladies that buy for it, she's on sick and set in a house, I just saw her today.
Another reason she wanted to go in there before tonight, the NACO lady that does the actual approvals coming down Thursday, coming down Thursday. So she wanted to know if it'd be, if both these candidates could be, could be a candidate for NACO to approve.
How many people we serve?
I am consistently at 77. I am hitting 30-plus at the inbound mills just about every day. The last few days I had to, the weather, this weather, they get out of it. It's great with my legs and hands. Since I've been there, we're actually have as many men coming as we do women.
I was a while ago, couldn't go. I think we need to allow her to go ahead and, if somebody's willing to do it, I mean, because that's pretty job turnover, you know, pretty quick. Tim made a motion for us, go ahead and allow her to add that extra person, Second from Gina Hall in favor.
Thank y'all very much.
Keith, you got any of these? James? Gina?
Keep calling, click body. You gonna touch it?
Yeah. You want me to announce it?
Yeah, just kind of touch on that with grit, I appreciate it.
Well, I don't know what all those are. Why y'all pulling those out, I got the list already.
You sure?
Let me bring up speed a little bit, up at the pilot. Where pilot still has a, see, has a commencement date, I guess you could call it opening date or whatever, still in the month of January. But knowing how the weather's being this kind of, this week and possibly next week, I think it's going to be closer pushing it toward the end of January, but the Michael Span drive, the drive that's going in off of 129 straight across to 47, has already been, it's already cut all the way to 2 to 47. The sewer system, the manholes and all is already in the roads up there, in the road on Michael Span for to cover Southern Tire Mark and the pilot, but that'd be where it They are starting to structure, what we call structures, putting structures in for storm drain tomorrow. That commencement date was supposed to actually have been December 26th, I think, around the 26th to 27th was the start date on that. So we're two weeks, two weeks out on that commencement date, not meeting the start date or whatever. Part of it's holidays, part of it's weather, part of it's going to be waiting on structures to be built. But to my knowledge, as of this morning early, all the structures have been delivered up there and they should start on putting those structures in for the storm drain tomorrow. And then they'll work from the north end to the south end of it, of the drain, instead of from the south to the north. Trying to do that, which is backwards usually, but they're trying to do that to get ahead of, stay ahead of the curb gutter where they can go ahead and curb gutter or get that part of the road built that goes in there to the pilot. Because they're very, pilot's very anxious for that road to be finished. They want the road finished before or at that same time they're finished. They don't want to be waiting on the road to be finished for them to open. I went ahead and allowed, told Bill, you know, we talked about it before, about them clearing our right of way to our 200-plus acres on the east side of 129. Had those, had that center hundreds to 100 foot right of way through there, had the center marked all the way through to the high wall. There's a 50-foot high wall, and then there's a 30-foot ditch gully on the other side with a, you know, about a 40-foot across the creek. They, while they were in there, they apparently, they see a better, which that road goes in there and they didn't realize that that road goes in there and then turns and goes due north, it goes back north. So in the coming days, we're going to be, I'm going to be reaching out to the landowner, Mr. Gray, and seeing about actually moving the right of way or getting different easement through there to our property where we can kind of, they found a surveyor, seems to believe that we can bypass and go around that high wall. And that, it's about a 50-foot high wall, a wrought wall, 50-foot wrought wall, but anyway.
Is that on this side of the creek?
Yeah, it's on Gray's side. We're about 400 foot from there to where ours is. We're about 400 foot from being to it by that wrought wall. So if we can get, you know, we're going to go ahead and get clear too there, I told them, go ahead and clear the whole 100-foot whip. We'll clear it and run it in the middle and burn it in the middle. That's where we're at on that. Brea, I know if you've noticed or not, or hadn't seen it or not, but Brea's getting the timber cut off of the property that's on their side, on the south side of the interstate. They've been hauling the timber out of there this week. So I feel like Brea's got something working on their side of, their industrial park closer to 47. Anything else up that way? Of course, you know, they're going to reroute Elliot Road, probably rerouted over onto Piscadoodle Road where it comes out down through the now be rerouted over to Piscadoodle. That's the only update I got on that. And let's see. Gina, Tommy, you got, we're going, I need to act, ask for a member, anything, do we call on Tommy to speak?
He can, yeah, you can if you want to.
Tommy, you want to, you had a conversation, Gina had a conversation with you earlier today that she called me about, if you want to come up and talk to them a little bit about what you're wanting to do.
Yeah, I've talked to, I've just been working for, working on this for a little over a year now, but just kind of getting to the stage where we're going to try to move on it. And the company we're dealing with is telling us we probably need to talk to you guys about clarification and make sure that we're within our parameters and rights. We're trying to move on with our business up there and what we do, our death care, and we're, we want to put in a crematorium, cremator system there, you know? And the company we're dealing with, they take care of, they take care of all the EPA and the Alabama Department of Public Health, they deal with all them, but they, they did tell me I should probably reach out to you guys and just make sure that the city didn't have anything on the books or on record saying that there's something that, some requirements we need to meet for you guys in order, before we put this thing in. They said they, you know, they're going to jump through all the hoops with the regulations and the people that regulate the cremator. Ultimately, the Alabama Board of Funeral Service regulates us as far as putting it in. And since I had that conversation with Gina and Todd, today I found out some more information. Ultimately, we've got one, two, three, four parcels, five parcels of land there. The funeral home proper, which is a, is a commercial property, the parking lot, which is a commercial, the house on the north side and on 253 on the north side of the parking lot, that's a residential, that's where my daughter lives. The built, the gravel parking lot that's behind and behind that house and behind the funeral home and borders Riviera Drive, you know, that goes around behind the funeral home. That's the, that's the, that's the property we're talking about putting, putting this part of our business in. We've got a building up already, we're going to have to add on to it. But ultimately, they did tell me, the Board of Funeral Service told me today, in order for us to do that on that property, it has to be deeded on the same piece of property that the funeral home is. Well, Mike was fleet footed, I told him about that when we first got here, him then fleet footed ran over and did a little, you know, did me a little thing here. The funeral home is on 62001, that's a commercial property. This property is 62.00. So ultimately, I guess I'm asking, do you guys have any regulations as far as us doing this? And I need to have 62.00 and 62.001 deeded together as one deed, which would be bringing that, that piece of property into a commercial property to where those two, that unit has to be sitting on that funeral home proper, the property that the funeral home's on. Can't be two separate deeds in order for my liability and all that, in order for the Board of Funeral Service to regulate me and my liability to cover it. Those two pieces of properties have to become one. So I'm kind of asking, I guess, how does that happen? I sent Todd an email with the regulations that the state requires, and I think he understands it and we understand it. And the best we can tell and the people that are handling the crematory installation for us, they say there's not anything city-wise on, on record that says we can't put it there, but they encouraged me to come to you guys and approach you and say, hey, we want to do this, is it okay we do this, is there any reason why you guys can't? So that's where we're at.
Yeah, the city don't have any regulation, regulate nothing like that, but we've never, you know, had any, anything like it to be regulated. So the women on Palm Forest City now, on the forest porch, the property that you're wanting to join, that's already joining, which you want to put into one that's not in a commercial zone, that would be, which Sandy's over that, on that board, the zoning board, I don't know if Todd can allow to that, if they've had to vote on, if that zoning board had to vote to add that piece into commercial property or not, being it's already joining a commercial property. But for a city's standpoint, other than the zoning board, the zoning board, which you go through the zoning board, it'd be a question for Todd, and I don't think the city has a problem with it.
Well, I appreciate that, and we'll go further with the zoning board, I guess. Hey, I got to be honest with you, I'm not 100% sure of that, that parking lot. I know my front parking lot, that's in front of the funeral home, it's, it's, it's zoned just like the funeral home is. And that one maybe too. I don't want to, I just paid property tax, we're going.
But you know how it goes to the county?
No, we'll just do, I think, Tommy, what we could do is we could just privately, if you're an attorney, can do a deed from you back to yourself and include both parcels as one, deed it back to yourself, so when the mapping office records it, they record it as one parcel, instead of being two.
Going to funeral home LLC, that's how it's due.
And, and, and right now, I believe it's in your name personally.
I think it is.
And so we could deed it, we could, you could deed it to the LLC, deed both of those as one parcel to the LLC. It's something we could, you know, we, that would be very easy to handle. That came up since I talked to you earlier today. They called me back from my company and said, the only thing you got to be sure of is that in order for that to be covered, for us to regulate you, that's got to be on one piece of property, one deed. So there is a driveway that divides those two, they got to be on one deed. I'll look into that. Okay. I prepared that, I prepared that letter for the city.
You got it ready.
I got it ready for you.
Do you need, you need me to take action on that letter?
Tommy, you need that letter? The crematory people, this is not a pressing issue, but before they will send somebody here to do a site visit to make sure it's going to work, they want, they want that letter signed saying that there's no, there's no reason why they can't put a crematorium there.
Wouldn't have to be in the agenda, I guess, for that, but I just need to ask the council, I guess, if they approve me to sign this letter stating the fact the city has no problem with him doing that, adding that part to his business. I need to ask for motion or just a, not a, a.
Well, just go ahead, since you presented that way, just go ahead and ask for motion.
Ask for motion, I've got one for Keith Second, Gina Hall in favor for me, so. You going to add any more employees?
Good possibility.
That's always a good thing.
Somebody can't match that.
It's very seldom, sometimes I fail to do this, but this has been kind of brought to my attention tonight before I've ended the council meeting, so I'm going to bring it. Nelson Kemp Foundation yearly makes donations back to the city, cities, certain departments inside the city. And I wanted to recognize the Nelson Kemp Foundation for the work that they do back into the city, that they pour, that they put back into the city of Winfield by going over some of this monies that they put back toward each department. I'm going to read it off right here, Chief Brett Burleson, enclosed check in the amount of $5,000 from Nelson Kemp Foundation, Chairman of the Day, maybe used at your discretion for the police department. Thank you for all that your department do to help the community, especially at Main Street and Past Time Theater. Then we got one to rob with the street department for the same amount, $5,000, with the end in the same way that they appreciate what, the work that they do for the main street and keeping their, keeping everything like, looking like it should. And then we got one to Regina's period at the library for $5,000, due by any, for any library project. Got one for Gina Bryant down at Park Recreation that they can use at their discretion. They want to use it to, they want this particular to go to use it to purchase a new sign machine that funds that $5,000, go toward that. And then they got one to Allen Stovall, chief of fire, fire chief up there. $5,000 donation to the fire department to use at their discretion. Got one for Susan O'Mary for the amount of $5,000 for the senior citizen program at your discretion. And one to Amy Burleson for $5,000, go toward her salary, that'll go to that department, the Past Time Theater toward her salary. So I think that, I would appreciate a foundation like that that donates back to the cities as much as well as that company does, I mean, that foundation does because it's every year they do that, and I fail to recognize it a lot of times, and I think that they, if you see, Mary and them need to thank them for their donations back to the city. On their old business, I feel like ST Bond, when they start this, this, I believe that our paving will start this month, as soon as the weather's permitted, because they've just got through doing the parking lot up here at the middle school. I believe they're going to leave some equipment here. There's a good possibility that they may work in between according to what the weather does on some of our streets prior to moving to Michael Span Drive and 129. So that, that's going to be starting real, real soon with the paving, within this month, I'm sure. So that's all the old business I've got. If nobody else, if there's any other business, other business, I'm going to go to the, ask next time the council's payable to pay the bills. Yeah, ask for motion. Got one Keith Second, James Hall in favor. Okay, let me jump back a little bit. I noticed when Johnny come in, Johnny Span's here, he's filed several, several complaints individually and through with the city about a dog problem that's over on, I believe that's Chapel Street, is that Chapel Street that that dog problem's on, that we've talked about several times in here, which we've looked at the ordinances and different things and been back and forth with Todd. looked at the ordinances and different things and been back and forth with Todd and, and I can feel Johnny's pain from the, uh, videos that he sends me about every Saturday or every other Saturday with the noise that he's hearing. Uh, I could probably hear it on my phone, I could probably hear it on the TV screen in the house, in the yard thing, hear this chair squeaking as much as I say they can, I know they hear these dogs, it's in his backyard. Uh, I want Johnny to know that we, we, we haven't put that to the side and not doing nothing about it, they, it's a, uh, it's, 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 I can let Todd probably elaborate a little bit more than I can on where we're at on it. Every council member in here wants, wants something done, there's nobody that don't want anything done with that project. Uh, we want that, we want that, we want that worry to go away, we want that problem solved. It, it's, cause we know it's not just you, you may be the only one sending videos and the only one speaking up, but there's other, we know there's other neighbors that's gonna feel the same way. So we, we know the pain, we know the, the history of that situation. We, we're trying to hang it professionally the best way that we can. Uh, you know, so can you not, can we not cite them or penalize a fine? Yeah, we, we can pick up and send to jail and come back and then it's just, it's just, it's just gonna be a contest, it's just a continual revolving door because it's just not really stated as a final cure to that, I don't think. Todd, you, you got, have you got any, any more insight that you wanna add to the situation that we've got up there for us, what we can do for us, the city, uh, deeming that project and that problem, uh, to, to become going away?
Well, I mean, it, quite frankly, I believe that, that there, there are a couple of options that we have. One is a finding of a nuisance in, in, in issuing citations, shutting it down that way, and the other is through, uh, uh, the dog ordinance itself. But the problem becomes then what, who, if you do that, then what do you do with those dogs? I mean, it's a, solving one problem creates another problem. And so there's just not a real easy fix and, and, and as, as bad as I feel for Johnny, Johnny, it, it's, it's, you and I have talked about this before, it's, it's a difficult matter. Uh, and, and the city is interested in it, the city's concerned about it, the city wants to help you, I want you to understand that and we're gonna do whatever we can, but, uh, we're, we're trying, we really are. I, I don't want you to think that we're not even considering it or just kicking it down the, down the, kicking the can down the road.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
I made the first complaint in, uh, November of two thousand twenty-three when I realized what was gonna happen and then I filed the other one in August of last year. It's not only the noise and I've sent videos and y'all heard them, I'll play it to you again if you want to, but now it's also become a smell issue where you can't get within fifteen, twenty, thirty feet, maybe further than that. It stinks so bad and that's, I mean, I, I, I don't know. Uh, I'm, I'm coming to y'all because it's becoming an issue of not only us being able to enjoy our property, but it's also devaluing all of our properties. And I think that's a big concern and y'all need to be worried about.
Any, any other council member got anything wanna add or?
Did we put in a comment to say if there was some kind of limit? Have you, you can have? Before it becomes, I thought we had discussed.
Was there not a, a limit passed as the number of dogs or cats that you have? I believe there was.
But no.
I bet I'm worried, because we'd acted on that. A long time ago.
Thank you, though. Your only regulations, you feel a little bit fat.
I believe.
Inside or outside?
I think he's right.
What if nobody's living in the house?
I can't, that, that's not criminal act.
So what if, what if they're being put somewhere where no one's physically living?
No.
I don't know if somebody's physically living there. I think that you would have to have somebody living there. Can you do that?
Johnny, someone just asked me, and you and I've had this discussion, and I want you to clarify this for the council, you have communicated with the Health Department?
Yes.
And what did the Health Department tell you?
That they could not, they only control human feces and not animal feces.
Same thing they said about this other house down here, they turned it back, they turned it back a lot.
Is this considered a business or just a personal own?
Just a personal, she doesn't operate a business there.
Is that a business or is that just a personally owned?
She doesn't operate a business there?
That's where I'm at.
It's not a business, can't, it can't be listed a business, not a zone for business, she's don't have a business, there's no license.
But she is, like, she, she does have a five oh one C three corporation, operates animal rescue.
But that's not a zone for business, right?
That isn't too limited, there is, my property business, business, it's a key.
She's right at the edge.
Yeah, that's right.
Right at the edge of hers, yeah, she's there.
And Johnny's is.
And then her past one day.
Might be something with it.
But, you know, I want you to know where I'm at on Johnny's, that's why, that's why we have city limits and, and ordinances is to protect against, protect citizens that's inside that city limits with those ordinances. A lot of times the ordinances are not very clear, there's wrote years and years ago as to what can or how they need to be. We've changed a lot of ordinances over the last twelve years that I've been here, we've, we've added stuff to ordinances to take care of stuff that was left out. But I, I, I mean, one of the problems that I have with this particular is, is we don't, we don't have a big dog problem in, in city limits of Winfield, we don't have a big problem. We have an occasional complaint of, of a dog, but we don't have a big dog running at large problem. And, and a lot of problems that I've got with this is a lot, these dogs didn't come from the city limits of Winfield, they, they brought, they're brought in there and that, that's one issue that I have and, and I need a, I need a, 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 a law-abiding citizen in the city limits of Winfield to understand what our laws and our ordinances are, if you're gonna live here and you're gonna do this, this is what our, our ordinances are and, you know, that's what our laws are and you need to abide by them. We, we've come close to doing some things, then we backed up a little bit and said, no, that's not how we need to handle it. And, you know, during holidays and different things, it kinda gets, gets off the back burner, uh, uh, it gets put on the back burner, I guess, is what I'm trying to say a little bit. But it's a constant working deal for me to try to solve the problem because I feel like it lays more on me than it does anything because I'm in the, in the position to try to make sure that the ordinances of the city's carried out and to protect the citizens that's in there. I don't wanna go down the road and try to get this, if his property's not in city limits, try to get him to join us in the city limits of our property and then I'm sitting here and I've got you that, so you don't need to do it because the ordinances are no good because they don't enforce them. So that being said, we're, I'm gonna make it my objective this year, twenty twenty-five, which I'm not gonna give it a year, but I'm gonna make it my objective to solve that problem one way or the other. Regardless if it costs me or if, or whatever I have to do, I'm gonna try to solve that problem with this dog. I've, I've, I've worked with this individual before, the individual's worked with me. I, I mean, everybody has, you know, everybody has things that they care about and are invested their time and money in and, and it's evident that this person, that's what their, their, their career is, is these animals, but that again is causing a problem for other people in their area that's around them. So I'm gonna, I'm going to, you know, I'm gonna make it my goal this year, the first quarter of this year, to solve that problem for you. And I'm, I don't know how I'm gonna do it, but I promise you I'm gonna be working on doing it. And that's all I can do, I can promise to try to carry out this and I'm gonna be hounding Todd to work with me and I don't think that I'm gonna have a problem with these guys sitting here with me if I come up with a solution, I think they'll vote it just like that. So know that that's what I'm gonna do. I mean, I, I'm pretty good with my word and I'm gonna make it my word the first six months this year to try to solve this problem. So I'm stepping out on a rope and I can't tie it up.
Well, Mayor, I, uh, of course I'm looking at from the other side. I feel like that we've got laws on the books, we've got a zoning ordinance on the book, four ones on, and to me it's pretty simple, but like I say, I'm looking at it from one side because I'm the ones being affected along with a lot of other folks that's not saying much about it. I just expect the city of Winfield to carry out the laws, enforce the laws and do the things that's on the books. If, if we're not going to, we might as well do it away with the zoning ordinances and anything else and just go back to what it used to be.
Uh, and I, we can go, we can, but I agree with you, you have, you have, your, your point is well taken and I understand that, but I can, I can ask one or two questions from the guy behind you and I can ask one or two questions from the one to my left and he can probably tell you why that that won't work exactly that way. And we could go through a long, grown out, it's just like, a lot of times you, you, you've heard, I mean, I don't know, it's just like the problem with, uh, fentanyl, it's just like the problem with any kind of illegal drug. We can pick them up, we can lock them up and they're gonna come right back and they're gonna do it again. When I say that I'm gonna take care of the problem, it's not gonna come back, that's what I'm talking about. Now, we can do what you're saying, as far as the ordinances and the zoning, we can do what you're saying, but the problem will come back. When I say the first six months, I'm gonna cure the problem, what my, what I intend to do, to where it don't come back. And that's why I won't make the right move the first time. But we can go through, go tomorrow and take out part of these, take out some of these actions in these ordinance and this zoning, but it's not gonna solve your problem, it'll be back.
Biggest thing I can say about that is, is it affects my daily life and all the other people around it, but it's also, and I need you to understand this, devaluing our property.
We totally understand that. I don't have to be told once, I got property too and I understand that, totally understand that. And that's, we, 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 we think that we're trying to value, bring the value of all the property just in other areas in Winfield, what we're doing for is paving streets and, and drainage and stuff like that, we understand this devaluing your property, I totally understand. And if I come to look at that house and I heard that, I'd probably say, let's get in the car and look, I wouldn't wanna buy that house, I understand that. I think everybody in here does, like I said, these guys right here, if I come up with a solution, they're gonna be on board to do it. So we're not kicking the can down the road, so to speak, it's just, I'm gonna make, if I make a move, I want it to be the right move and the last move, I don't want to keep kicking the can down the road. And if we act on some of this stuff, that's what's gonna be happening. So I'm gonna try to work on both sides, with both sides. I'm gonna try to work with the person that has a love for these animals, that's involved in this as much as they are and understand, get them to understand the problem it's causing for other people and see if we can't come to an agreement with it and we're gonna go through these ordinances where we won't have this problem again and make sure the zoning ordinance don't, that don't allow it to happen. It's just like if somebody moves a mobile home into a place that's not allowed for mobile homes, power company's not supposed to hook power to it till the city side's off on it. That still happens a little bit because it slips in on us, we can't watch everywhere a mobile home gets put in. We can't watch where a travel truck is set up every time and the power's done hooked to it, those things slip by us, but that's why when, when I, when I, when we, when I try to solve this problem, I don't wanna deal with it no more, I want it to be over with. And that's my, my goal for the first six months this year is to see that I can't make that happen. And we're gonna get, I'm gonna get this ordinance, I'm gonna get the zoning ordinance, I'm gonna dissect it line for line and see what needs to be added to it or taken away from it and see what I can do with this landowner that's over here. Work with them is what I'm gonna try to do, I mean, I, we've worked with it before, me and Todd both has personally, tried to, to, to try to abate this situation. But like I said before, the problem, I, a biggest problem I have with that is a lot of these animals are not from here and that creates a bigger problem. Now, when it comes to animals, I figure everybody in here, just about everybody else in here, you may not have, but a lot of people in here's got an animal, they have a dog and we know how to take care of it, we know how not to be a nuisance for somebody else. I got cows inside the city limits, if I've got somebody's dog running my cows, that's a problem. That neighbor needs to keep their dog up where it don't run people's cows. I mean, it's the same way with the issue that we've got south of town here that we've talked about a little bit, there's a reason that's the way it is and why that situation's the way it is. And a lot of times, it's just like somebody that buys a house in a hole and they come and want the city to figure, fix the problem of water running through their yard. Don't buy the house in a hole, but I'm not telling you that, but I'm just saying people don't look at the city, they need to look at everything that's around you a lot of times before you do that, but we can't take care of every problem, but this is a problem that we should be able to take care of and, and I'm gonna make sure the first six months of this year that you don't have to come back to me with this problem. Like I said, I don't know how I'm gonna do it, but I'm gonna work on doing it and I, I think that I can come to a solution. Has anybody else got anything that wants to say to, to this effect? Brett, you ain't got nothing to say, have you?
I'm, I'm ready.
You've been ready too, ain't you?
I'm ready to do.
I'm gonna cut you down. Oh, you got anything to say? Anybody else got anything to say? I've, since I've voted for, Tommy, the one on Jenna, I voted for Johnny, I'm gonna make sure nobody else wants to say anything.
You mean on this issue or any other issue?
Sir?
You mean on this particular issue or any other issue?
What is it?
Particular dog issue or any other issue?
Well, I gotta be careful what, what it is you want to talk about, is it something the city needs to take action on?
I was about to ask them, I was gonna ask them on Kirkwood to put a dead end sign at the very end, that was why people aren't going all the way to the end turn around.
Yeah, I've had, he's, I've had complaints with that before, so I'm gonna let that come up with old business, what he's asking for, you familiar with what he's talking about? Kirkwood Street right here, when you go across the railroad track, turn a left, that's Kirkwood and you go right, Kirkwood goes over to the railroad. We paved that street, the last, the last business on that street is Henderson Automotive is on the end of that street, is, it, they, is a dead end sign was there on the right.
It's right, it's right where the first cross street is to the right, where the, the house burned and that was another issue I was gonna ask about, how do we go about, uh, asking them to clean that part up, running?
The, where that burnt part is?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's gonna, that's gonna come back on our Wheaton Leader Zoning Board.
Yes, sir.
Uh, there was a, uh, I don't know that, 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 a lot of times, I'm telling you what happens on those situations, a lot of times, and I'm, I'm not real, I'm familiar with the situation, but I'm not real, real familiar with the state part of that situation.
Yes, sir.
Uh, a lot of times, situations like that get involved in an estate where no one person is responsible.
Yes, sir.
When you got two or three other people responsible, sometimes this person don't wanna do it and this, this person is not gonna do it because they're not gonna do it.
Yes, sir.
We got the same situation over here on Community Street that we've had issues with, that I was actually working on today down here, uh, Carol and, I can't even think of the first name of golfing, lives down here, has, you know, I personally cleaned up around that place one time before and it's, uh, but there's an issue going on there on Community Street, we got the issue right down below that where you're talking about. That, that problem you're talking about for is getting that cleaned up, I think that you'll see that happen from just what knowledge I have from that estate, that I think that that, that'll be solved not too long, that far as that cleanup part. Now, far as this dead end, no turnaround, I mean, I might ask Brett if he's got a solution, but the biggest. but the biggest problem that I've had on that Kirkwood, the biggest complaint that I've had on Kirkwood is not necessarily people going through and then turning around and coming back at it, is is their how fast they're coming down through there. That is a continuous complaint that I've had because kids lives in that corner house and they've been very concerned about it now that that business is over there. Uh, I'm trying to, Brett, you got any solutions, what you think that might be a good, uh, solution to solve that problem for is traffic turning around? There's not a cul-de-sac down there that haven't turned around, somebody's driveway.
They turned around in my driveway, that's what I was gonna ask.
Are you in the, next to the last house, you're on the last house on the right?
On the, on the left, and that was another question I had because the property right next to mine, there's also another burnt out house that's been there.
Okay, is that Miss Reynolds, Cora Reynolds?
No, it's the one on the other side.
That's what I'm talking about on the right.
No, no, on the, if you're coming straight down Kirkwood, on the left, there's hers, then there's mine, then there's another one, that's on the very end, there's a burnt out house.
I'll look at that, I thought, I thought hers was the last house.
No, no, there's three different properties there, there's hers, there's mine, and there's another one that was, that was, uh, Ms. Tibble, now it's like Grady, not Grady, Danny, Danny and Rhonda Harden, is the, uh, the ones that's on the, uh, deed on that one for payment taxes. I've offered to buy it from them, so they wouldn't sell it to me, so I don't know how to get it cleaned up, because I was gonna try to buy it and clean it up.
Okay, I'll check on that for you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, but Brett, I need you to kind of.
I, I have set cars down there. Uh, I had another lady that called, uh, has called two or three times. And I send cars down there, but I mean, it's just like in the rail. I send them down there, they're not gonna do anything until they get gone.
What about, is there any houses on the, on the right, when you go down through there that, that's anybody that lives other than that first one on the corner or any on the right past that house?
You talking, you talking about at the very end or at the middle?
On the right. If you go, when you go through the intersection on the right, you got, uh, um, uh, drawing a blank. Gann lives on the right.
Yes, sir.
Is there any houses past the Gans on the right?
Yes, yes, sir, there's, uh, let's see, there's two, there's two more down there.
Do they have the same complaint that you have?
They, they do, I was actually trying to get one of them to come to the meeting.
So, everybody that lives past the Gann house has the same complaint that you have?
Yes, sir.
About people coming down there turning around?
Yes, sir.
I think I could.
That's the first I heard about that, I do know the speed's been, been a hit.
Let me look on that.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I appreciate you coming, you know, showing, normally, normally in a situation, you need to call and get put on the agenda.
Okay.
Uh, that's how it usually works.
Yes, sir.
That, if I can relate it to something we've already talked about, I'll go ahead, but before we do anything, it'll have to be on the agenda and then we'll take action.
Yes, sir.
Uh, but Johnny's issue, Johnny's issue's been on the agenda several times.
Yes, sir.
Uh, but I, usually when I see a different face in here, I feel like it's for a reason, that's why I gave you the opportunity to talk.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to set up a property down there and I just happen to see that you guys are doing the thing tonight, I just wanted to come and listen in and see how.
I like people to get involved.
Yes, sir. Do you know if the, uh, the city is, uh, supposed to have, uh, like drainage down there off the street since it's part of the city street or not?
I need to look at that.
Okay, yes, sir.
You know, get into drainage issues, let me, let me bring everybody up to speed a little bit on drainage. When the city takes over a street, which, when, especially on my watch, I won't, I won't see that street before we take it. If it's not already a city street before we take it, I'm gonna look at all that. Uh, the drainage has to be, is one issue. But back in eighteen hundreds or eighteen nineties, nineteen twenties, when they built this city, they come through and made, built these roads. And they looked how the water runs, like everybody builds a road, well, well, we need a cupboard here, we need a ditch here, we need to turn this water this way, this way. That's how they did it, that's how people do it still today. But when you start building around those, around those different spots, I mean, I got a place up here on two thirty-three, which is a state highway, or two fifty-three up here is a state highway, the water runs off. That, before anything was developed on that side of the road, they just, it was woods. So, they dumped the water in the woods that went to the nearest creek or the nearest ditch. Then people built around it, people built on this side of that ditch or that cupboard and then they built on this side. And then more development comes up here, then you get more water. More water creates more of a problem. Every time there's development and you take away trees and vegetation, you got more water. And when you get more water, you get more wash spots. And then the people don't understand why the city can't do nothing about it, it being on private property. It didn't exist when it existed, when it started. And that, that's what happens a lot of times is, is, but if it's a, if it's a clogged drain, if it's something we can do on our right of way to ditch it, to hep it, we don't have no problem doing that. If we got the same problem down here with another landowner, the city don't have the problem, but this landowner's got a problem because it's another state highway, when they run this one eight, I don't know how long ago, when they put US Highway seventy-eight through here, they dumped the water off and got pipes to the nearest creek, and those pipes rust out or wash out or whatever, and then it creates a big hole. Landowner don't think they're responsible for it because it's the highway water that's coming through there that's caused the problem. So, the city really can't help and do a whole lot when it's that far off the right of way. But if it's something on the right of way and it's a drainage issue because of a street that the city's took and took and over and claims to keep up, I mean, we'll do our part to do what we gotta do with it. I'll, I'll look at the drainage problem that you're talking about and see if I can help you with it. But, uh, that, a lot of people don't understand how that water issue got to where it is and it's because of development, more development, you know, and that's why the railroad, when they build a termite, Keith can explain to that, when they build a, 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 a cupboard or head wall or something underneath the railroad, they won't do it for a hundred-year flood because you don't ever know what's gonna happen up above it. Uh, but yeah, I'll look at that for you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody got anything else? If not, I need to ask for a motion to adjourn. Got one from everybody, I need to get a second from everybody, all in favor.
State Bank and Trust has been invested in Winfield and Marion County for more than a century, and today, we remain deeply committed to meeting the needs of local families and businesses with excellent financial products and friendly down home service.
But more than that, we're dedicated to supporting the growth, success, and well-being of our community as a whole. Because when it comes right down to it, there's nothing more important than community. And just like our outstanding city officials, police, and fire departments, you can count on State Bank and Trust to help make Winfield and Marion County a great place to live for everyone who calls this area home.
Hello, everyone, this is Chuck from Span Hardware in Winfield, Alabama. Good to be with you today and just want to let you know, we've got some new things this year for the spring season. As you can see, uh, steel now has a lawn mower. We're gonna have a full line of the steel zero-turn mowers, we have a full line of the steel, uh, wheat trimmer and chainsaws, just about anything you need to maintain your home this spring and summer, from lawn and garden equipment to paint to hardware, anything you need. Come see us, we'll help you if we can. Thank you.
This is Eric Simmons from Furniture Depot. Uh, we have a store in Geun and Fayette, we've been serving the people of Northwest Alabama for, uh, twenty-three some odd years. We'd like to be your furniture store if you'd let us, and we'd like to thank you for your business this past year and invite you to come and shop with us this coming year and for the years to come.
Hello, Lee Hines here, owner, operator of Alexander's Heating and Air Conditioners.
We've been family-owned and operated since nineteen fifty-four, proudly serving Marion, Fayette, and Lamar County. We are carrier factory authorized dealers, but service all makes and models. We specialize in residential and light commercial HVAC systems.
So, as we get ready to enter another hot Alabama summer, please remember Alexander's Heating and Air for all your HVAC needs.
Tom Bigby Electric Cooperative was formed for the need for electricity to the local citizens that were living in the rural areas of Marion, Lamar, and portions of Fayette Counties. This line consisted of twelve miles and twenty-two consumers on the road from Geun to Sulligent. Between then and now, there has been a lot of hard work and dedication from a great number of people to make this cooperative what it is today. Tom Bigby Electric Corporation would like to thank each member. You can contact us today at two oh five nine two one six seven one two.
Your story starts at Bevel State Community College. Whether you are just starting out or starting over, Bevel State has an opportunity that is right for you with five locations serving seven counties. You don't have to go far to start your own success story. Plus, with tuition lower than four-year colleges, you won't need to spend more for a great education. Visit us online at bscc.edu to learn about your options for seamless academic transfer and high-demand career check and health science offerings. Let us help you.
From home, we understand the importance of a personal commitment to provide quality services and products with value to meet every family's need. You'll find very caring professionals that truly desire to offer dignified service and true value that families need and desire during the loss of their loved one. With our newly renovated facilities, services, and quality merchandise, you can rest assured that we stand ready to meet the needs of your family in honoring lives lived. Bowen Funeral Home is located at nine eighty-one Alabama Highway two fifty-three, just south of Winfield High School. Call Tommy Bowen, Certified Funeral Service Practitioner at two oh five four eight seven four three two seven.